Good afternoon. The date is August 22, 2023, and we are convening our BOC work session. And today we will be focusing on our mobility SPOLOST. Our presentation will be brought by Drew Wrestler. And Drew, I'll turn things over to you to get us started.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager for your time today to be able to go over just an update on how we're coming on developing a project list in accordance with the direction that we received last November. Before we start, I do have a few thank yous, and I'll try to talk a little bit slower than I do when I read my agenda items. Thank you to you all for your time in walking through some of these draft presentations, to the city staff that we met with for their insight into their future plans and some of the projects they have going on within their cities, for the CIDs. I know Town Center is here, but I know all of the CIDs have been very supportive and giving with their time, as well as DOT staff. Laura and Jonathan are here, but there's a lot of staff time that has gone into developing what you will see today. In particular, Laura in the Planning Division, Amy Ma, who I came to a number of times with last-minute map requests, Carl, Theo, and the whole county team. So as I mentioned, this is consistent with the direction that we received last November to develop a project list in accordance with House Bill 930 for a 2024 MSPOLOST referendum. I'll note that second bullet point there as both our guiding principle and our guardrails, that this just per straight out of the legislation. The projects that are eligible are those projects that establish, enhance, operate, and maintain or improve access to transit. And the goal today, this, you'll see this again here at the end, is to determine BOC consensus on any of the following questions of the sales tax amount. We still don't have confirmed direction on the percent it allows for up to 1%, but can be variable in .05% increments, less than, as well as the duration. We have a couple scenarios to run through with those decisions, as well as confirm overall project categories and affirm schedule and next steps. By way of background, these four main bullet points are the history of adoption of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan that has been our foundation for developing a draft project list to presenting at the work session in October of last year. Just some options for the board's consideration, to the board's action on November 17, authorizing staff to develop a project list, and then finally on February 28 of this year, providing some support to be able to do those planning activities. January through July, DOT staff has met with several stakeholders several times. We met with each of the cities and CIDs to gather input on the project list and plan to hold additional outreach efforts into September and October. March through August, and I won't read through these, but these are more specifically the tasks that we have been doing between the high-capacity network, funding requirements and modeling, and then definition and evaluation of transit-supportive projects that we'll speak to here in just a moment. Before I get started into the meat of it, I did want to go over some of the need and purpose of looking at transportation improvements. We look at population and employment between 2020 and 2050. We're expecting a 25% increase in both. And that's equivalent, from a population perspective, to Cherokee County, the population equivalent to Cherokee County moving to Cobb County, and not to mention the growth that we're seeing on the counties around us and Paulding-Barto in Cherokee. Now, so where that both population and employment growth is expected to go. We have some density maps here. I am not Mike Alexander, and I won't go into a deep dive into the data, but this is based on ARC forecasting. And what you'll see is most of the employment is expected to gather and densify along the interstate system, which is much the way that it is currently, the Northwest Corridor, 285 and I-20, as well as the density for the population being a little bit more spread out. There is some potential for a college student SKU in the Kennesaw-Marietta area depended on how college students note their residency. But the population pattern and employment pattern holds still. In terms of commute patterns, where people are coming from and where people are going to, this looked at the core metro Atlanta region, core metro Atlanta counties, as well as those border counties here. And you'll see a number of the summaries of those trips on the side there. But in total, more than, including these counties and others, more than 200,000 trips come from outside of Cobb County into Cobb County and vice versa. More than 200,000 trips a day begin in Cobb County and land outside, and then, of course, 128,000 work trips start and end in Cobb County. And this is based on 2020 data, and much of that is a result of the fast-growing of the region, in particular, those counties on the outer edges of Cobb County. From commute patterns to population demographics, as we look at these pie charts, there are the same population, same generational colors between the 2015 distribution and the 2050 based on ARC projections. And what that projection shows is the 65-plus is where we're seeing the most movement in terms of percentage, doubling as a percentage and tripling as a gross number from 81,000 to 231,000. At the other end of the age spectrum, we see growing universities. Between Kennesaw State University is the second-largest in the university system with more than 42,000 students. Carl corrected me as we went through this presentation and said he moved, just moved in his daughter, so that should be 42,001 students there. But second-largest in the state, as well as Chattahoochee Tech, which is the largest technical college in Georgia. Now, their students are spread out between multiple campuses inside and outside of Cobb. Most of those are very close to Cobb County, but we're seeing 14,000 students there, as well as Life University and other higher education. So we're seeing growth in the higher education, the 18 to 24 population band, as well as the 65-plus population. And that presents some unique opportunities and challenges as we move forward into the future of transportation in Cobb County. This slide is just a reminder of those referendum goals that we discussed at that last work session in October of last year, to connect to regional activity centers, having good mobility within those activity centers, and then ultimately serving the community in all that we propose. Now, to the money slides, there's a lot of analysis that went behind these slides, but as we look at a 30-year revenue projection, of course, this is based on 30 years, so any time period less than this or a percentage that is different than these two options, we'd be glad to run those numbers through the model. But it is significant revenue, and we will talk about how that is projected to spend down and improve transportation within Cobb County, should the board choose to pursue it and the voters approve it. But a total of almost $11 billion over a 30-year program, $5.5 billion, of course, being half a percent of that. Those are local funds. I will note the leveraging opportunities. So with passage of the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, it has more than doubled the FTA-CIG program. Now, it's a lot of letters, but the FTA-CIG is really those larger grant-funding opportunities for transit capital projects, and that has significantly increased with passage of the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, as well as a number of these other sources, the Formula Funds, the other discretionary competitive grants, state funding. So looking to leverage the local funds that could be collected with federal and state opportunities. Now, specific to scenarios, we could have run down a couple hundred different scenarios because this is variable in .05% increments in any time duration that the board chooses to move forward with, but we really settled on two 10-year scenarios to present to you this afternoon. And the reason for that being, if we look at 15 to 20 years down the road, it's so far into the future, it's difficult to understand and project what costs will be, what it looks like to improve transportation, technology changes, and the like. And so really, we settled on presenting to you two 10-year scenarios because ultimately that's a timeframe that's a little bit easier to wrap our minds around and can provide some comparison between what a 30-year program and a 10-year program could provide, 10 years again being in that timeframe of what most of the transit projects can be delivered within. And as we compare these two, largely, and they're both the first 10 years of the program that is being proposed. So the first column, the first 10 years of a 30-year program, provides increased competitiveness for those CIG funds. In order to apply for those funds through FTA, the agency has to provide a 20-year funding plan for how operations would be taken care of over that timeframe. So largely, this allows for the delivery of those projects within that 10-year window, and then the remaining 20 years to operate the system that has been implemented. It also allows for aggressive implementation and a sustainable funding source. We will talk about that in just a moment, but allows for the general fund contribution to transit, to transition to this program for the long haul. It does require, I will note on that first bullet point, for any bonding. And these scenarios that you'll see are based on, for a 30-year, do include $900 million of bonding for that, that would be paid off with revenue collected through that program. So entirely cased within that program, but allow for a faster delivery, a larger capital program delivery very quickly, and then the duration of it to be used to pay down those bonds and to operate the system. The 10-year scenario is a pay-as-you-go, which is very similar to how our current SPOLOST are operated. It's a shorter timeframe, but it does not perform as well in terms of competitiveness for those CIG and other discretionary funds, as well as just looking at year 11 of how the transit system would be funded past that, would be either subject to the board identifying those revenues through the general fund or through a successive referendum to be able to continue those system costs. In terms of the high-capacity network, because that's where the primary difference is, as we look at this funding screen, the high-capacity network is the difference between a 30-year and a 10-year program. And the maps demonstrate the differences between the two, allowing for the Northwest Corridor, a connection from South Cobb into HE Homes, and then the regional connection across 285 to be funded in 10 years, and then a much more robust capital delivery program over the full 30 years. But again, this would be delivered, projected to be delivered within the 10-year duration. In terms of funding, this is a little bit difficult to read on the screen, but have sent out paper or electronic copies of this. Again, the high-capacity transit system is the difference between the two scenarios, just based on the capital outlays involved in developing a BRT system. But half of the referendum and the scenarios that we see here is funding roughly half, funding other components. So in terms of draft composition, we have this colorful pie, and we'll walk through these and eat the pie one piece at a time. These would all be delivered simultaneously, and really, that holds true for both scenarios. Again, the primary difference between the two scenarios being the high-capacity transit system, the remainder, the other half of that pie, being consistent between the two scenarios that we've discussed. So speaking of high-capacity transit, we will jump into that section and first really talk about BRT, because what we've put together here is based on a BRT, High-Capacity Transit System. And BRT, of course, stands for Bus Rapid Transit. And oftentimes, when we think about and talk about bus rapid transit, particularly in metro Atlanta, where there is not an active BRT line, most folks stop at the "B" and think, well, bus, I've seen a bus, I've ridden on a bus, I understand what a bus is. But this is very different from just strictly a bus, as we've seen it in metro Atlanta. There are specialized vehicles and dedicated lanes. And the beauty of the dedicated lanes and the enhanced stops is to make it operate the same as light rail. So as we looked at, I looked back at the Connect-Cobb study that was completed in 2012 that looked at alternatives analysis for high-capacity transit along the Northwest Corridor. And what that showed is that the speeds between a light rail system and a bus rapid transit system were the same. The amount of time it took to get from Town Center to Art Center on both systems was the same. It was the same number used in the analysis, and that's because of those dedicated lanes allowing for very quick production and low headways between systems. But then the advantage of BRT is that it comes at 1/10th the capital cost of light rail, as well as significantly faster delivery. So what can be delivered on a BRT system in five to 10 years would take 15 to 20 years by comparison with that same light rail system. Bus Rapid Transit, Artill Rapid Transit is looking at those connections that are not as high a priority and potential ridership as the BRT system, but still have a lot of ridership potential in providing high-production frequent headways between those connections, as well as bus priority treatments, which allow for transit signal priority in ITS systems that provide for that connectivity and increase efficiency of the system. So as an example, and this goes back to an example that we gave in October, but the example holds true. We know that going from Cumberland to perimeter on 285 can take 18 to 45 minutes, and that's a pretty significant range, but anyone that's ever driven on a 285 knows that if there's a crash, or if it's the peak hour, or if it's raining, or it might rain, or it's a day that ends in Y, the travel times can be varied significantly between those times, whereas the express lane transit allows for a very consistent 15-minute trip every time. And this is being done in partnership with the top-end cities that have looked at the 285 express lanes coming and identified a transit potential to provide better east-west connectivity without necessarily having to take a vehicle trip to do that. A little bit more local example, where the first one was a little bit more regional, looking at a connection from the South Cobb Transit Center, as it's been proposed, to Kennesaw State University. Looking at a student in that area, hypothetical student, that may take 25 to 55 minutes. The connections between South Cobb and Marietta, Marietta to KSU are roughly in the 20-minute trip timeframe for a BRT, a highly reliable competitive trip. So it would be that same 50-minute trip every time, and again, be very consistent and competitive with the trip in a private vehicle. Now, some of those questions in terms of how those connections could happen are answered on these next few slides, and I'll speak about these very high-level and relatively quickly because we can get very detail-oriented in each of these. But we went through with our technical experts and looked at each of these connections to identify more specific alignment and cost projections, because while we know that it's in the neighborhood of $30 million a mile to do a BRT system, we don't know exactly. Each corridor's a little bit different, the right-of-way availability, the construction costs, the grades, the unique conditions of each connection really driving. And so we allowed, we went through this process to provide a more detailed cost projection because we do hold firm to that the history of SPOLOST delivery in Cobb County has really set up that if the county promises to deliver a project, the county will deliver on that project. So as we move through these, this is a Cumberland to Marietta connection. It's one of the higher-rated connections. As we went through the process, to orient you, the colors are based on ridership propensity and potential in those corridors. Of course, the Northwest Corridor and the corridors between Marietta and South Cobb perform very well because the 10 and the 30 are our two highest-performing routes. So it serves to reason that those would continue to perform very well. The color is based on that potential ridership. Whether it's a solid or dashed line indicates whether or not, on an initial look, it looks like it can be delivered in completely 100% exclusive lanes, or if there's some shared lanes, in order to be able to look at constructability and costs. Any exclusive lanes would be widened, additional lanes to the system and not take away any existing capacity. So we see this connection from Marietta to Cumberland, moving further north from Marietta to Town Center, another important connection that would provide connectivity to, obviously, the Town Center area as well as downtown Marietta, but also provide connectivity between the two KSU campuses of Kennesaw and Marietta. I spoke about the Route 10 connections. This looks at the Route 30 connections, which is our second-highest-rated route system in our transit system in connecting from that same Marietta Transit Center to South Cobb. Currently, the Route 30 runs from Marietta through this area all the way to HE Homes. It's a very long connection, which provides for difficulty in timing those routes because something small early in the route can turn into something very large in terms of time differences later in the route. By shortening the distance between those transit centers, we're able to provide a much more consistent and reliable trip between the two. Next, we look at the South Cobb to HE Homes connection. The term and I for this are largely set, but we do provide some options, recognizing that each of these connections will need to go through an alternatives analysis process to look at the best possible route through there. In particular, we look at Alternative A, that runs the route down Ostel Road closer to downtown Ostel, providing an easier connection for those in Ostel to get to this high-capacity connection. Alternative B looks at going across east-west connector down Floyd eventually to Mableton, which would connect it by the Maple House complex and some of the downtown areas that have been looked at tentatively with the very new city of Mableton. Each, like I said, each of these connections will go through a similar process to look at alternatives analysis and look at questions like this. Is it more beneficial to go down Ostel Road, where there's a little bit more right-of-way, a little closer to Ostel, or to go down a Floyd road connection that would bring it by the Maple House and the existing parking ride that's in that area? Some of the questions to be answered more specifically in program delivery, but questions that we do want to be very, very open with. Next, we look at Cumberland to South Cobb. Now, we're into ART, and this demonstrates how ART can utilize the exclusive lanes developed on the South Cobb to Marietta connection, but then come across Wendy Hill and Spring Road to provide that South Cobb to Cumberland connection. This is one that Ostel spoke about in terms of connectivity for workforce, those that live in Ostel but would like to work in Cumberland in having safe and reliable access to those jobs. ART 21, South Cobb Drive, again, another one that looks at connectivity across South Cobb Drive or Atlanta Road to connect in Chattahoochee Tech or downtown Smyrna. Again, looking to do an alternatives analysis on that connection as well. And then a connection from Marietta into East Cobb across Roswell Road. Now, that's the high-capacity system, again, roughly half of what each scenario looks at, but it is not the entirety of the system. And really, it begs the question when we look at these is, how do I get there? How do I get to this system? And here we begin to eat a piece of the pie that helps to answer that question. And before I jump too deep into what microtransit service is, I did want to address what microtransit service is not. Years ago, there was a consideration of Uber and Lyft as an opportunity to provide some of this connectivity to the general public. Ultimately, though, in looking through that and looking through that in the FTA public service lens, Uber and Lyft are essentially software services incredibly successful and incredibly useful, but in terms of vetting of the drivers, vetting of all of the vehicles, just not something that they're set up to do. They're set up for drivers to find passengers. What microtransit service is, while it's similar to that, it does provide a public transit trip, where those vehicles are, go through a very rigorous maintenance schedule and plan, as well as having the drivers all screened for all the necessary to make sure that the trip is as safe as it possibly can be. So to go into more depth about that microtransit service, pickups and drop-offs are provided within defined geographic zones. We would look to work with the public on defining exactly what those geographic zones. And then trips within that zone, so think of a smaller downtown area, would be curb-to-curb within that zone, and then trips outside of that would transfer onto the transit system to make that regional connection. So if we think back to the example of the hypothetical college student in the Powder Springs area, they would be able to take microtransit to the transit center and then take the high-capacity connection up to the Kennesaw campus at KSU. Some potential use cases for this additionally, I think of, when we think again back to the beginning and the generational changes that are anticipated, of, I think of my grandmother. She lived her last few years in East Memphis in Germantown area. And anytime she needed to go to the grocery store, someone would have to come, whether it was one of my cousins or my aunt, would have to come, pick her up, take her to the grocery store, she would do her shopping and take her home. She didn't have the independence of mobility in order to be able to do this. This serves that ability to do the mobility and allow folks to age in place and still have that independence on mobility. As well as I've worked, my brother has for a long time been part of Special Olympics, and I think a lot of those athletes that utilize work as just a means of a lifeline, but again, don't have the ability to drive. Microtransit Service provides that point-to-point curb-to-curb connection within those defined areas, as well as the larger regional connection through the fixed transit system. As an example, if we think of someone that lives in downtown Powder Springs, just as I mentioned before, but wants to get to the hospital, today on Uber, that cost is $52 last time we checked, and that's before any of the medical costs associated with that. Whereas in the future, a microtransit trip can serve that, again, in competitive timeframes to an Uber or Lyft trip, but again, as a shared trip throughout. Transit operations, as we begin to slice through this pie of what can be possible through a referendum, I did want to talk very briefly about our current service. CobbLink, as it's known now, formerly CCT, has been around since 1989, so 34 years old. It has always been workforce-focused. It is the second-largest transit system in the region, boasting 1.5 million rides per year and 250,000 of those rides on the 1010X system along the Northwest Corridor, and has always been very system-focused at looking at how all of those connections can come together to better serve the region. So in terms of transit operations, would allow for the funding of expansion to areas of need, boosting the overall system, increasing reliability. A couple of the more specific opportunities would be local circulators, i.e. the Cumberland Circulator, where we're looking at some route changes to increase the efficiency of that system, as well as other circulators throughout the community. Additionally, staff has, is in the process of exploring a connection to the airport as another opportunity to provide a better service to the general public. It would allow for either the supplementation or complete replacement of the general fund contribution, and actually, the scenarios that you see here look at full replacement of the general fund contribution to transit, so it would be that $17 to $18 million that is currently dedicated in the budget, which would allow for the consolidation of contract funding into one resource. Next slice of the pie, transit vehicles, facilities, and amenities. And the goal of this section is to provide first-class vehicles, facilities, and amenities to the public and transit riders that would be safe, well-lit, clean, always in a state of good repair. And what we've seen is that state of good repair is so critically important. Right around COVID, we had two things hit us at the same time. We had older paratransit vehicles and longer lead times for those vehicles. And what we saw is the performance of the paratransit service dropped off because of the unreliability of those vehicles. Fortunately, we were able to lease those, really restore our original service there for paratransit. We've started to get in some of those new vehicles, which is all the more ramped up, the consistency, reliability of that necessary transit connection. But we recognize just how important that state of good repair is to the transportation system in general and the transit system in particular. In terms of more specifically looking at, again, I mentioned the Marietta to HE Homes connection, the Route 30, in providing shorter headways between by shortening up the connection there, as well as improving the efficiency effectiveness of that system, as well as in terms of transit facilities, providing better intermodal connections. If we look at Cumberland, currently, there is just one way for buses to get into those bays, and so they have to turn around in the mall parking lot. There's no opportunity for parking, for drop-offs, and amenities like that. In terms of transit technology, the department has a great history of using technology to better transportation throughout, where we've been the leaders in our traffic management center, our adaptive traffic signal systems and event management systems. And this would provide the opportunity to expand that even further into transit, utilizing opportunities like transit signal priority that could also parlay into emergency vehicle preemption to improve the movement of transit vehicles and the consistency and reliability of the system, as well as looking at technology improvements that are inevitable over this timeframe. Simplified fare collections, being able to, we've all bought our coffee and just tapped the little reader at the, with the barista, allowing the same thing with the transit system, as well as passenger information on when buses are expected to arrive, amenities like Wi-Fi and the like. Now, this next section, I do want to talk more specifically on definition of what transit supportive is. If we think back to that definition, that guiding principle, these projects are either intended to improve the operations of the system or improve access to transit. And so as we walk through a definition, because we wanted to be very clear about what projects were eligible under this transit-supportive definition, sought to define it in a legal eligibility sense, we looked at projects that provided increased capacity or operations. Those projects were defined to be on the proposed fixed route system, so they provided direct efficiency benefits to the direct efficiency benefits to the system or accessibility bicycle pedestrian projects that were within a quarter mile of a fixed transit connection. And this talks about how we walked through that process as well as a general map with a very long list of eligible projects that we would look to refine with the public in September and October. A few of those examples from the CTP would be the Ostel Powder Springs Trail that I know the cities of Ostel and Powder Springs, as well as the Clarkdale community that is in between those, are very excited about those future connections, the senior center there, connection into the Silver Comet Trail, would be eligible because there's a fixed route system planned for that connecting through there. As well as, if we look into the northern part of the county across the Chesapeake Corridor, again, another connection that is proposed, allowing for operational improvements to improve the efficiency of that transit connection as well as to the general public throughout. So next is public engagement. We've eaten the whole pie and then really want to talk about priorities and general feedback is the goal of the public engagement plan. We can and will be speaking to you about these in more specific terms, but generally, it breaks down into what we're proposing as a virtual as well as in-person options for folks to provide their feedback on their priorities, on those projects they would really like to see. That would increase the viability and the effectiveness of the project list that we are putting together and looking to gather that feedback and provide it back to you by the end of October. And then, once the calendar turns to November, we would be looking to the board for authorization of a project list. That specific project list is needed to be authorized in November because then that allows for sufficient time to go through the legislative steps to get that project list onto the ballot. There's a number of iterations between the official meeting that's required with the cities, some coordination to make sure that all defined projects are in the ARTP. We've already begun many of those conversations, the ARTP being the Atlanta Regional Transit Plan, that is held by the Atlanta Transit Link Authority. We've had some great conversations with them, making sure we're aligned with their schedule and process, as well as the time that it takes to get a question onto the ballot through elections. So with that, we land where we began. In terms of discussion, next steps, look for your feedback on anything generally and any board consensus on the amount, the duration, as well as confirming our general direction with the project categories and affirming the schedule and next steps.
Thank you, Drew, for that robust presentation. I know we've been working on this for some time with our consultants, and I'm pleased to see that we are making some movement forward to see how this can appear on our ballot next year. Again, there are decision points for us to determine what this will look like specifically, but I think this data will better help us to assess where we're going than our last iteration. And with that, commissioners, if you have any questions or comments for Drew, you're free to share that at this time. And I'm hoping, Drew, that you will also take some steps to meet with commissioners outside of this meeting.
Of course.
Should you not receive any specific direction today. With that, commissioners, do you have any comments or questions for Drew? Commissioner Garrett?
I'd just like to put on the record that Drew and I have discussed this, so thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for putting together this presentation, and I appreciate the context as well for what's here. I did have one follow-up question for the commute patterns. This is a great diagram that shows just kind of how we're, of course, or how we're interacting with our neighboring counties. Do we know what drives each of those trips? Are those truly work trips? Or do we know if they're tied to other activities within the county?
It's a good question. I understand that these are primarily work trips. I will look to my wife, who is nodding yes.
Okay, okay. Because you know that's my follow-up is like, who?
Absolutely.
Because I'm looking at the de cab trips. I know we have the highest number of veteran, we have a high concentration of veterans here, we're either first or second.
Absolutely.
And, you know, making that trip over to the VA or what have you. I just don't know if we can further contextualize some of these trips. And then, I think I had one other follow-up, but we'll definitely sync up again. But again, I appreciate the extra context in here, so thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, thank you, Drew. We have met also on different scenarios and, so I was kind of surprised to see the number of people that would come all the way from Gwinnett, which is, to me, the farthest out. I know we have an employee in the audience that does this every day, but that was surprising because, I mean, why would you come? Well, I don't know, this is a long way, and you go through two other, two or three other counties to get here, but I know that's the stats and that's what people are doing, I guess, with fuel costs and it seems like it doesn't really make it worth it, but. And then also, the two options, a 10-year initial with a 30-year duration, would that have to be renewed every 10 years?
It would not. This is looking to try to answer the question of, and it's understandable when we talk about a 30-year referendum of, typically, we're talking about five- to six-year general sploß, which those programs can be delivered exclusively within that timeframe, plus a little bit beyond if there are some unforeseen circumstances. Whereas with a 30-year program, it's, wow, it's going to take y'all 30 years to do this or, why so long? And I think that's a lot of the questions that the legislature dealt with when this passed in 2018 of, why do we need this long duration? And really, it comes down to sustainability of funding into the future, of looking at those, when we build a bridge or an interchange, yes, there's some maintenance that's handled with staff, but there's not ongoing active management and operation of the transportation system. It generally, other than some traffic signals, but generally operates within itself. Whereas a transit system needs operators, bus drivers, dispatchers, customer service representatives to make, to make the wheels keep moving. And so the 30-year duration allows for that, that knowledge, that consistency, and that sustainability where, once the system is built, it can be, continue to operate so that there's not something that's built that, for one reason or another, can no longer be sustained in terms of public investment. And so what we've put together here is, generally, within that 10 years, build it as quick as we possibly can and make good on anything that the voters have approved, assuming, should they approve it. And then, for the remaining 20 years, allow for the operation of that system so that that system can continue to operate into future generations.
Okay. So on the 10-year delivery and duration, after 10 years to maintain it and upkeep, you don't have the penny or sploß?
That's correct. It'd be a question to the board at that point to say, now that we've delivered these 53 miles of a high-capacity connection and have provided these fixed route connections in this microtransit throughout the community, at the end of that 10-year, once funding is close to running out, the question to that board at that time will be, do we scale it back? Do we look to the voters to renew it? Or do we find that funding in some other revenue source like the general fund? Those would be the three options that would face the board, really, at the end of either of these, but the primary difference being the long-term sustainability and the ability to bond, to deliver quicker.
Yeah, so that would be hard to take it out of the general fund and then put it back. I mean, it's going to be difficult. And then, what about, I know there's sidewalks and corridor infrastructure, but that's just if it relates to the transit. So, and we're always looking for additional funding for sidewalks, resurfacing, transportation costs, intersection improvements, that even the 2022 sploß isn't funding all the requests and needs. But if they don't relate to transit, how are we going to fund those? And how, how would that be a separate, there would have to be a separate referendum with a separate amount, penny?
Absolutely. And you may be singing Commissioner Richardson's song in terms of what she's looked at in terms of mobility sploß plus. So just to clarify a little bit, this shows those funding, those funding lines of approximately 175,000, 175 million for each of those categories of accessibility and operational improvements. And again, the accessibility would be those bike-ped connections within a quarter mile of fixed transit, and then operations would be along the fixed transit system. So that, and we've pooled those projects from the 30-year projection of needs from the CTP. So we pooled those, filtered them through an eligibility screen to come up with the projects that the public will see in September and October to provide their input on which of those projects they think are most helpful and most beneficial. Now, you're absolutely right. This does then leave those areas that are not within a quarter mile or along fixed transit for accessibility and operational improvements. We are, and be glad to pull that from, kind of, what are those projects that didn't make it through that eligibility matrix for y'all to take a look at? But in terms of funding for those, it would be to the board's discretion of whether those come through general fund, or, which is very difficult because of all of the demands on the general fund. General sploß, which would be, we would be on pace, should the board look at renewal, would be on pace to renew that in 2026. So it would be an option to fund those through there or through some other means that the board would like to explore.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Drew. Just some general observations made dovetail with some of our conversation, and I know that there's interest to see some of those transit supportive projects. And I believe you're providing, similar to our current paratransit, that any of those transit facilities need to follow a fixed route, so they couldn't augment the flex system that could be put throughout the county?
As we looked at the intent of the law, now, this is fairly new. The law was passed in 2018, and there's not been a successful referendum yet. So as we looked at that and looked at eligibility, you're right, there are those more demand-responsive microtransit connections, of course, paratransit to some extent because it does deviate from the fixed route system. But as we looked at that, since it becomes more on the general transportation system, the benefits really skew towards, skew away from transit specifically. And so we did not feel that that was something that we could put into this as being true to that definition of operations and accessibility of transit. The benefits there really become very tangential because we don't know that a transit vehicle will ever pass through a particular intersection or a particular sidewalk unless it's tied to the fixed route system.
Okay, thank you. Our on-demand, excuse me, our on-demand transit has the ability to activate a lot of the county when it comes to providing transit service. I noticed that there is a broad coverage of that service on the map, but I noticed some pockets where it wasn't provided, central to the county in Marietta, and then on the outskirts on West Cobb and northeast Cobb. Can you tell me what constrained this map?
Of course.
To provide this coverage?
This, I'll share, this map came directly out of the CTP, but there are opportunities to advance various aspects of that.
Okay.
So I know you have spoken to us about, in particular, the southwest corner there.
Yes.
In looking at the ability to expand that. So we've run some of that analysis, be glad to share that. That would provide some opportunities. Really, the outer edges are a little bit different story than the interior. So the outer edges are really a function of cost and density, that there's less density in that area, so less opportunity for the microtransit system. And anytime we expand it, there's a cost associated, so just in terms of a cost benefit.
Okay.
But certainly, there is a definite potential for public need in those areas, so glad to explore those areas. In terms of the central parts, kind of south of Marietta, in that area, we have, of course, Dobbins that would be restricted to access, so that's part of why that is left out, as well as, there's a lot of transit density in those areas, so there's less of a public transit need.
I understand.
So it's almost on the other end of the spectrum of being now well-served by transit.
Okay.
So then, the demand for transit responsive or microtransit is less.
Okay, very good. Something that we attempted in our last iteration of looking at a referendum is the connection between Cobb and the adjacent counties. And I see some projects listed here that could provide rapid transit out in East Cobb, but I know that there may be opportunities with other areas. How can we coordinate to see if they are activating projects or have interest now that we have a more developed project list?
So our focus has been on interior to the county, where we've spent a lot of our time meeting with the cities and the CIDs. But if we look at the overall map, there are some of those connections, and there's another map that I'm struggling to find, I won't look through that now, but that shows some connections up into the Woodstock area along Canton Road, potential connection from.
You're missing that.
And it may not be in these, but glad to provide some of that supporting, and that'll be some of what the public will see, as well as some of the commuter connections and on, the connection you're talking about downtown Sun Ferry into Sandy Springs area into the 400 connection. So now that we have those identified, those are in the CTP, so there was cross-county, cross-city coordination. As we go to the public, we will then, internal to staff, be more outward-focused in terms of our outreach, of talking now with Cherokee Canyon and Woodstock, we already have a meeting set up with their staff, but also reaching out into those areas where there's opportunity and projects that have been identified, reaching out to them to talk about their sensibilities to moving forward on a partnership project like that.
Okay, very good. With outreach, you have a very robust outreach schedule. If we can go back to that map?
Of course.
Yeah. Okay. Slide here, just want to take a look at that again. As commissioners have events to, is it possible for them to have, I think we talked about this last time, like a presentation in a box, something that they can take and also share with residents?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that would be great.
And we're glad to manage that in two different ways. We're glad to have staff come and set up a table. We're also glad to provide those materials.
Okay.
To be able to talk through and direct someone to a virtual or resource to take a survey.
Good. I always have a question about how we activate less-activated areas. These are events where those that have transportation might get to unless they're in one of those areas where people congregate more so en masse, like the colleges, you know, you have a mass of students.
Of course.
But I think a lot of churches might be an area where people may convene, or even it could be a public shopping center where somebody that might not be activated to go to a town hall meeting, you know, a lot of people are going to purchase their groceries, and how we can be creative to reach people who, you know, will, could cross over with those that would vote on a ballot.
Absolutely. So a comment and a request. A comment is, we've begun, and actually, staff has done a fantastic job developing a story map, because this is, this is a complex program of projects that's system-based, so wrapping your arms around it can be difficult at first blush. So the story map to just try to help better explain what it is. And then, so that's the comment in terms of the request, as you have those interest groups or folks that are interested in just getting more outreach and talking about folks' opinion.
Yes.
We'd be glad to provide those resources, again, to either have staff come to an event or to just provide those resources to say, here's a link to a survey, here's some basic information, please encourage you to go look, find more, and make your voice heard.
Didn't we talk about activating some funds to be able to do additional outreach through a third party? Would that be part of this effort to reach those hard-to-reach areas? Would that be part of this effort to reach those hard-to-reach areas?
It could be, that is not what we have here. What we have here is encompassed in everything that we have funds for currently through the September and October outreach. Really, our focus right now is, again, the charge that the board gave us last November of developing that project list. Once we develop that project list, we were glad to discuss different opportunities for educational efforts. I know there have been, we've had some conversations with the CID about education and things like that. But again, our focus right now is on that final project list.
I just think it's critical because I think our project list would be skewed if we're not reaching those that come to our traditional meetings that we have. And we always grapple with this, but I think it's important that we don't miss out on key populations, particularly considering, I think, a key component of this is equity. And if we don't try to reach, you know, areas that could be dependent and have high need but may not necessarily show up at our traditional meetings, we may limit our project list. So I just ask for some creativity, even if it means investment upfront, so that we don't continue to add additional inequity in our system.
And I prepped Vida that I may do this, so she can shake her head or nod if she wants to add anything. But we're looking at any way that we possibly can to reach out. Vida, is there anything in particular that you want to add in terms of what is funded through the current public engagement plan?
Vida's our former transit manager, I believe, a couple transit managers ago, who's now with the collaborative firm.
Hi, good afternoon. And thank you for having me. So sure, so once, we do have some activities that we do have included in our activation plan that have been, that we have, that have shown, that have proven to help in our EJ efforts. For example, we do know that there are some things that we can do for those who might be using transit or for those who might be, for example, waiting to use transit, maybe at shelters where they can use QR codes, for example, to access their survey if they have cell phones. We can also, if need be, if we see the need arise, we could also be there to assist and answer any questions that someone may have about the survey, about the project list. We also have other opportunities that we can engage in with some of the literature drops that we plan to do, that we think can also engage. We, you know, think that as much as we can be in person at some of those those places where people do tend to gather, that might not be some of your more traditional places. We think that we could help with some of those, to help meet some of those environmental justice type of populations.
Okay, and something I'm thinking about too as you're speaking, what about the use of social media? I know there's like geo-fencing that could be done online to target persons to participate in a survey. Is that something that we can build into outreach?
Social media is included in one of the techniques that we are looking at. We're also looking at email marketing as well. So that's also one of the techniques that we do have included in our activation plan that we have, we are working with our partners with DOT.
Thank you, appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions for Vida? Thank you. While we're acknowledging people, I do want to recognize Matt Segal, who's here with the Transit Advisory Board. Is there anyone else here with our Transit Advisory Board? We also have Tracy, who's our Director of our Town Center CID, appreciate you being here today as well. And also, I'll see the Head of our Mableton Improvement Coalition, thank you Ray for also being here today. Make sure we recognize our community partners that have a stake in how this moves forward. All right, thank you. Okay, so Drew, okay, you're getting to, the question I was going to ask you, what are next steps?
So next steps, of course, we'll do the public engagement plan if there are those, again, activities or different areas where you would like us to help to spread this and help to get more engagement into those surveys, we're glad to provide that as y'all think through different groups that may be willing to reach out. But really, I do want to come back and press the board just a little bit on the sales tax amount and duration. So we provided two scenarios here, obviously, there's many, many more that can be developed. But would love to settle on the scenario and any consensus that we can have there because then it narrows and focuses the conversation that we have with the public in September and October.
So when would you need that? I saw, again, you had some dates on the outreach slide. When would you like to have that feedback, Drew? Because I think it's important that we have meetings set up with each commissioner to get that feedback.
Of course, and so we've met with each of the commissioners to go over this draft presentation. We're hoping to get as much of that today as absolutely possible. And then, again, we'll have outreach beginning in September. So would like any feedback that y'all are able to provide. If there's more time needed, glad to take that, but as much as we can get.
And then the confirm project categories, what specific categories are you referring to?
Just those general components that we had identified. If we go back to the big pie chart...
Like transit facilities? High-capacity transit?
That's right, that those general categories that we had listed before, the high-capacity network, the overall transit network, the micro-transit, the two transit supportive, the vehicles, facilities, and amenities.
Okay, would any commissioner like to provide, Drew, some feedback on any of these matters today?
I have a question. This draft is just for 930, the 30-year.
That's correct.
SB 175-year is out as an option?
That's a board decision, but the direction we had from the November meeting last year was to develop a project list consistent with 930.
And then, when you have the up to 1% penny, that's for this draft?
That's correct. Now, the two scenarios that we provided, the two 10-year scenarios are based on 1%, both of them. So it was, again, just those two, we could have provided 100 different scenarios and still had some leftover. But those were the two that we had provided.
Okay. I can give them feedback on... Because I've said from the beginning, I don't agree with anything more than the 1%, 1 penny. But 2 pennies is too much and whatever. And also, I don't agree with a 30-year tax. So I guess confirm the project categories. I'd need to study this a little bit further to see what all the routes, where all the routes are. And on affirming the schedule and the next steps, I think it's good that you're getting out into the community, not just at town halls internally, but also Taste of Smyrna and colleges and universities and the other, you know, parks, events, and things going on. But for the open houses, for the districts, I'd like to have the District 3 one at the Tim DeLeeuven Senior Center.
Of course.
Sioux Mill Library is in District 2.
Of course. Just a thought. Of course.
Do you have any other feedback?
Yeah, I'll provide mine, I mean, certainly I feel like a broken record in IMSPLOST plus because we know that there are additional needs outside of what this program can cover, but there are opportunities for us to still define what exactly fixed transit connection means. And I know that those are continued conversations and see if there are ways that we can pull in some of those projects that would be under 170 to see if there's something that we can do to still accommodate those needs. That being said, on this presentation, I am, I can be supportive of the 1% and the 10-year. I think that gives enough for the capital investment that's required for some of these systemic builds that have to be done. It does open up the question for the ongoing O&amp;M, the operations and maintenance, which is where the 30-year has that advantage. But I think as far as a communication standpoint for the voters, it would be prudent for us to just understand what it means and then when we hit that different threshold to allow the voters to take that next step. Since the type of high-capacity transit that would be invested in here is not, it's not like building a rail line where you're, you know, really, really changing the infrastructure that significantly. So I think this does give us a good, decent compromise. But again, I mean, you know where I am on that plus side. We have, we do have some real needs on the surface transportation. And I know that the cities as well are interested in some of those different opportunities as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Gambro.
Question, Drew. So you said that this presentation that you gave today was going to increase by 53 miles of transit. What miles of transit do we currently have, only in Cobb County? So this presentation is pretty much going to give us 53 more miles?
53 miles of high-capacity transit.
Right, how much high-capacity transit do we have today?
None.
None?
None. So the about $30 million, $26 million subsidy that we pay, that the taxpayers pay today, is, how many miles does that cover? I guess I'm trying to draw a parallel here because that's one of the things that constituents are asking is, you know, what is going to be the operating and maintenance cost? We don't know that, but we do know right now that the county has covered anywhere from 18 to 26 million dollars yearly as a subsidy for transit. So I didn't know if we knew how many miles that was to just kind of draw a parallelism to what it could be for this.
Sure, we can provide the amount of fixed route system. Again, we don't have any high-capacity transit within the county. So currently, the general fund contribution to transit, to that $30 million, that's the overall O&amp;M contract, is about $17 million. The remainder is made up with grants and Fairbox collection from the actual ridership there. Again, I don't have offhand exactly how many miles the fixed route system is. I know it is, on average, 1.5 million riders per year in terms of what that provides. Fixed route being far more flexible than high-capacity, though, just in terms of what it does and what it is because it's not the dedicated lanes. So the primary difference, I think, to the core of the question between what is now and what would be provided is the light rail-like system that BRT can provide of providing these vehicles in dedicated lanes for that high-capacity network and expansion. And we can provide the comparison numbers between the expansion of the existing fixed route and the proposed fixed route that comes from the CTP, as well as the micro-transit and the transit supportive.
Okay, and this should be no surprise to you, but, you know, I do not support this 30-year transit tax. We know we've got empty buses running around the county now, as you said, costing anywhere from 17 to 30 million dollars. Ridership has decreased and is continuing to decrease. So to do this now, expecting ridership to increase, I don't think is a feasible means, especially when this seems to be focused in one area of the county where we know throughout the county, we have got transportation infrastructure needs that need to be improved, but we do not have funding to do those. And those will impact the citizens as of today, which goes to Commissioner Richardson's, you know, push that she has supported of doing the five-year, which would start addressing more people's needs than the maybe 1.5 million that this high-capacity bus rapid transit would. So right now, I do not support it.
Thank you. Drew, can you put back up the slide that compares the 10 and the 30-year investment? There are two slides, one I believe was of a map, and then there's another slide that details, I believe, the investment in a table.
Sure, this is the overall high-capacity network that's based on the 30...
Okay, this is the map, and then I think there's a table that follows. Okay, or that precedes it, let's go back to the map first. Okay, so I just want to point out to the board what the opportunities are and limitations are for 10 versus a 30, and how you would be activating an entire county to vote on this referendum. But less of the county would be activated to support a 10-year if they do not see their area getting investment. And so I just want to be mindful of what's at stake here. It's not just a propensity for voters to vote on a referendum, but it's that what's in it for me factor that I believe gets limited as you narrow the duration. And as Drew provided, when you do have those fixed routes, you have additional transportation facilities that gets to the transportation plus. So the less fixed routes you have, the less opportunity you have to use these dollars to invest in those transportation facilities. And what we do have is an ongoing general SPOLOST program that does provide for additional transportation projects. And what the possibility is if we do vote on that in 2026 is an opportunity to augment the transit facilities that could be developed through this program. So I feel like we get more than what we're getting now with the traditional SPOLOST. So that would be one of the challenges I have in significantly narrowing the duration of this is that it's significantly limiting the map and the benefit to the stakeholders that would be potentially supporting this. Another thing that we've experienced as a board is when that can gets kicked down the road. And what we're doing is asking for the can to be kicked down a 10-year timeline versus a 30-year timeline of having to come back and revisit this. And I just have some concern with things that come up on an exigent basis. If we make the kind of investment that has been listed in that prior slide over that 10-year program, which rivals, you know, very well, the 30-year investment because it's upfront cost. But if we're not maintaining it, then I just think that we get into a scenario where we've, we have these sunk costs that are just not being maintained. You know, every year, you don't know what to expect, so that's my one challenge. I know we've dealt with this in 2011, when I sat in these rooms as a citizen and heard conversations about cutting routes and experienced people who were dependent on our transit system, who no longer had that. And as Commissioner Sheffield shared in our last meeting, they are walking to 1 and 2 miles to get to the nearest bus stop. They are walking miles to get to the hospital. And so I have a concern about coverage and I have a concern about providing or inserting perhaps a level of risk for those that may become dependent upon transit when you narrow that duration. Something else I didn't highlight, Drew, and it's not highlighted on your slide, is you stated verbally, but it's not written, that asking for a 10-year SPOLOST also makes us less competitive to leverage additional funds to augment our program. And so in this slide here, I believe you talk about the leveraging of federal funds. But I've heard, not just here today, but I've heard in other meetings that the shorter that duration is from 30 years, the less likely it is to activate federal dollars to support your program because they don't see that commitment.
That's correct, they ask for the 20-year funding commitment as part of those CIG funds.
It almost gets to a point, is it worth it? Are we trying to develop, are we trying to develop a more robust SPOLOST program? Or are you really trying to invest in a commitment towards mobility? And I believe if we're trying to invest in a commitment to mobility, then we should be committed in a more robust fashion that provides coverage to most of our citizens and that shows our commitment to leverage additional funding and to do something that can be maintained over time. I know you're seeking our input for this duration today. My ask would be, Drew, at least we have two scenarios versus the 100 that you said could have been provided. And so, you know, I think there's opportunity... And so, you know, I think there's opportunity, as you go out to the public or we have consultants go out to the public, is to share these scenarios. And I like Commissioner Gambrell's idea of that showing the parallels of what we have today versus what we can have tomorrow, so people can understand what the pros and cons are, what the benefits are, and perhaps insert their voice into this discussion, so we don't constrain it here today.
Of course.
Because I believe you've done a lot of work to get us to these, you know, these two potential roadmaps and...
Absolutely. Glad to. And some of the, in terms of the comparison in the story map, and we'll share that out once it's ready, but you'll be able to actually take a slider bar and kind of see the differences between the existing system, the potential system in this, so we'll look forward to sharing that out with you.
While we're on this slide, so there is a point here that says it leverages $600 million in federal capital grants, so just curious, is that not accurate?
It, so it, it depends. Sorry about that. The CIG is the vast majority of this, the capital improvement grants from the FTA. And again, like I said, it includes with that, they're all competitive grants. So whether it's both scenarios, the leveraging of 800 million in competitive grants over the 10-year versus the leveraging of 600 in federal grants over the 10-years, both of those are requiring us to go into a process with agencies across the country and say, "Our project is the project that you need to fund and come and partner with us," and the new small starts programs that are within the CIG. So then it's really an educated guess from then on. With a 30-year, that question, one of the questions that they'll use to evaluate is that 20-year funding scenario. So if it is the 10-year, then, again, we will do everything we can to draw down those funds to Cobb County. It would be a matter of us saying that, well, we are funded through the next six years, four years, whenever, depending on when that gets delivered. And then beyond that, the board has, we would come back to the board and say, "Board, are you committed to a 20-year as part of this grant application?" And then that would serve as our answer. So it's really just a question of who at the FTA office receives that, reviews those two different scenarios and conditions associated with that 20-year.
Thank you. Appreciate the extra context.
Of course.
Thank you, Drew. We're missing Commissioner Sheffield's perspective today, but I would just ask again, before outreach, that you just check in with all the commissioners again, and that there be provided some way to perhaps augment some of that outreach, and that we do give the citizens a voice to weigh in on this direction. I think we're a little bit closer, but I think we could benefit from having some other voices weigh in.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
With that, thank you, everyone, for coming to our work session today. We will be convening this evening at 7:00 PM for our General Board of Commissioners meeting. With that, we're adjourned.